Good evening, welcome to the November sixteenth member, uh, meeting of the Long Island Select Board. Um, this is a joint meeting that also includes the school board and the, um, finance committee. Uh, I'm going to start by reading a script for remote, uh, select board meetings. Uh, this is select board chair, Tom LaCusa. I'll be confirming that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Uh, members, when I call your name, please respond in, in the form of, Mark Strange.
Chair.
Steve Marantz.
Yeah.
Richard Foster. Okay, Mark Gold. Okay, I guess we're not here. Um, if they come into the meeting, please let me know. Um, and staff, Lynn Simmons.
Here.
Paul Besterzy.
Here, and Tom, looks like Rich was trying to get in as you called his name.
Oh, okay, so Richard Foster, you're here.
Yeah.
I'm troubled with audio. Um, all right, at some point, Richard, if you could check in, let me get your mark on, mic, mic, working. Uh, Paul Besterzy, you are here.
Yeah.
And is Deb House with us?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then, uh, as far as speakers, I know that we have the, the school, uh, committee. Is there representatives from the school committee, maybe the just the chair could just say yes?
Yeah, so I'd like to officially call to order the school committee meeting for Monday, November sixteenth, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ryan. And then the, um, uh, finance committee, can someone just confirm you're here?
Neither the chair, the vice chair are on at this point in time, according to the TV, the laptop screen.
Okay, now, we did have some confusion about, well, we didn't have much confusion, but somehow the information may have gotten out incorrectly. And so hopefully they will, you will be here, um, soon, um, but, um, all right.
Hi, this is Don Griffith from the finance committee, but I don't know if other members of the finance committee are on.
Okay, thank you, Don, for checking in, and, uh, maybe we should just, uh, check with some other members if you, if you have their numbers, I appreciate that.
Tom Legazza is here as well.
Oh, okay, all right, great. Uh, so, introduction to the remote meeting. This open meeting of the Long Island Select Board is being conducted remote, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, twenty twenty. Due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth and due to the outbreak of the coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID nineteen virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the governor's order suspends the required, the requirement of open meeting law, to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of the public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you find posted with the agenda materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely so as long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. In this meeting, the Long Island Select Board is convening by telephone conference, video conference via Zoom, as posted in the town's website, identifying how the public may join. The resident comments after the COVID nineteen update and general announcement, I will afford public comment as follows. I'll ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I'll call on each by name and afford only three minutes for any comments. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that some attendees are participating by video conference. Hopefully, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and take care not to share screen your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. All the materials for this meeting are available on the agenda posted on longland.org. The public is encouraged to follow along with the posted agenda unless I don't otherwise. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members, avoiding each by name to write any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you're not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members are, wish to engage in a call with other members with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call vote. Having read this, I will now move to the, uh, update on COVID nineteen. Your, uh, fire chief, John Dearborn.
Uh, good evening, Tom. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
All right, hopefully I'd be more successful than I was in the school committee meeting. So, uh, good evening, everybody. My name is John Dearborn, the fire chief and emergency manager. Um, give you an update on COVID and the, uh, town's response to the pandemic. It currently, uh, as of today, we have thirty-four active cases, and we recorded forty-eight active cases over the last fourteen days. We've no, currently have no cases in the long-term care facilities, which is great news. We have one active case, um, associated with the school community. Um, we've had five total to date. Um, we still have not demonstrated any, any evidence of in-school spread. Um, our current positivity rate for testing, um, is one point seven two percent. Uh, that's roughly half the region on average. So in respect, um, we're doing well, we're doing a lot of testing. I just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what our trend has been, because this is my greatest concern. Um, thirty days ago, uh, we had a fourteen-day average for cases of one point eight. Um, today, we have a thirteen point nine, um, fourteen-day average for cases. Our positivity rate thirty days ago was point five two percent, and today we're at one point seven six. So if I ask the, the community to please understand that this is a serious situation, and that we need to take all the precautions necessary to stop the spread of this virus, um, this, we, our number's going up, not as fast as a lot of people around us, but they are going up quickly. Um, we need to all take action together to try to slow this spread to get us through, through this time. Just want to talk quickly about a few things we're working on. Um, our COVID team continues to respond to citizens' concerns, complaints. That includes, um, you know, just public activity, uh, concerns of restaurants and businesses and other facilities. Uh, you notice that we've reinstated our electronic signboards. Um, we're going to try to, uh, update those messages every few days and really try to push reminders out to folks. Um, you'll notice that we've deployed some tree belt signs, and these, this is mainly in the response to complaints where people are walking, jogging, exercising, um, without wearing masks. We're really trying to emphasize the fact that the governor's order does stipulate when you're outside all the time, um, you are required to wear a mask. Um, we continue to work closely with the, uh, the school, uh, department. Um, I've addressed the school committee several times, uh, speak to superintendent almost daily. Um, and we're really monitoring the numbers again. Um, I greatly appreciate that relationship. Um, and, you know, obviously with the holidays and everything else, we're, we're really tracking, um, anything associated with the schools for this. Um, and I think, oh, um, just on, uh, terms of PPE, um, we have a very robust supply. Uh, right now, we, we believe we have about six months for, um, worth of supplies to carry emergency medical services, town, uh, events. We also have a contingent supply, but we're actually in the process right now of ordering more. Uh, supply availability is very robust right now, so we're going to take care, uh, advantage of that. We still have some CARES Act and FEMA funding available, so we're, we're going to go ahead and spend some of that money. Um, and our goal is to actually have about a year's supply. We're also looking at the possibility of vaccine administration. Um, and if we need to do that as a municipal function or partially as a municipal function, we need to have supplies for that. So without having all the information we need on the vaccine, we are procuring the PPE, um, and some other supplies associated with that. So we're trying to get as far ahead of the curve here in as many areas we can as quickly as we can. And then, uh, Lynn, will you speak to the event this weekend, or you want me to?
Yeah, no, that's fine, thanks. Um, so on Saturday from twelve to two, so Saturday, November twenty-first, we will be offering a drive-through mask giveaway at the high school. We'll be, uh, putting out information tomorrow, um, to publicize this via social media, the website, um, the reminder, pretty much anywhere we can. Uh, so again, this is a free mask giveaway at the high school on Saturday, November twenty-first, from twelve to two.
And with that, I'll, uh, take any questions.
Yes, yeah, does the board members have any questions, uh? Chief? Okay, I just had one question for Lynn. Uh, when people drive up, uh, they're not driving up with just one mask, are they? Do you have several? They get a package, or?
Yes, yep, we can, um, work with families to give out enough for your household. Um, yep, we have masks to give away and we're happy to do that. And, uh, we'll just ask that everyone stay in their vehicle and not get out. We'll have cones up and people directing traffic.
Okay, well, great, so.
And please, please be wearing a mask when you arrive.
Yes, good, good point. Um, all right, well, that sounds good. Um, chief, thanks for the update. Um, and good luck with this next step. I know this is a, a critical time, uh, in terms of, of trying to keep our numbers down. Um, so, uh, we appreciate all your work and efforts. So we will move on now. We originally had thought we would start the joint meeting at seven twenty, but because we are going to start it sooner, uh, we were going to move through the agenda and just hit some essential items, and then we'll move those, um, the other items back. And so, um, we are going to do, um, you know, forms of announcements. Um, I was thinking, Lynn, maybe we could put those till later. Does that sound?
Yes.
That's good. And then we will do resident comments. We had interviews for the cable advisory committee, the housing authority, and audit committee, and parks and rent commission. And we will be doing those at the end of the meeting, if those folks are able to tune in later, uh, we'd be glad to interview them. But basically, we contacted them to schedule that for our next meeting on, uh, December second, uh, seventh, sorry. So if we could just move to resident comments, if we have any of those, Lynn, if you.
And if you're here, uh, to make a comment, you can, uh, send something via chat or raise your hand, and we will call on you. As of now, Tom, I don't have anybody.
Okay. And, uh, and I see we have more representation. I see that, uh, Mark Gold has joined us, and I'm just trying to see if. And Richard Foster has joined us also. Okay, great. So, um, so while the board is here, the select board, and so we will now move into the, uh, joint meeting of the finance and the school committee to discuss the twenty twenty-two budget assumptions, directive, goals, and calendar. Um, and so I will hand this off to, to Lynn at first, and then I will show how Paul and John, uh, make the presentation.
Okay, and I do note that there are additional members of the finance committee here now. I don't know if they need to formally convene their meeting.
Yeah, Andrew, do you need to? Yeah, we can do that. Um, I see we have Phil, Don, Tom, and Armon, I believe, so we're going to convene our meeting now, seven fourteen. That's just the place, I think.
Okay, great. And we already had the school, uh, committee, uh, convene their meeting. All right, Lynn, I'll turn it over to you again.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, so you all should have received the three documents. Uh, one is the draft, uh, agenda, the budget agenda, the, um, the budget assumptions, and the detail that corresponds with that. Um, I think we were going, we were talking about doing a share screen here. Did you want me to do that, Paul?
Yeah, if you could, please. I will call up the budget calendar.
Yep, let me just find that document.
Or I can call it up if you.
I think I have it here.
I, I have it right here. Is that showing up?
One of these windows. Let me see. Oh, there you go. Great. That was Tom, I think. Thanks, Tom. Okay, so we've mapped out here, um, the pretty standard agenda, uh, schedule. Um, so here we are tonight, November sixteenth, the joint, uh, select board's school committee finance meeting. We'll talk about the documents that I mentioned. Um, and then the select board will continue discussion on this. And then after tonight's directives, uh, I will issue the budget documents along with the finance director to town departments. And they will have a few weeks to sched, uh, to prepare their budgets and submit those back. We have executive team meeting scheduled for late in December, um, with the goal of getting the budget, um, to the select board for February first. And this also corresponds, um, with the capital planning, um, process as well. Um, and this will, as you look through the calendar here, it brings us all the way, um, to school committee meeting in February, and then, um, a plan for budget forums sometime in March with, um, the select board adoption of the budget in mid to late March, and, uh, finance committee, um, review and report, all in time to get prepared for the annual town meeting, May eleventh. We have to work back from that date so that we can have the, uh, warrant distributed to all the households. So do you want me to stop first and see if there's questions on the schedule before we move on?
Yes, yeah, any questions on the schedule? I know that I probably have not done a good job of keeping up with Lynn, which was going over it. So if you have any questions, uh, just please ask them now, that's fine.
Okay, I don't see any. Um, so moving on, um, Paul, do you want to jump in a little bit and do some of the budget assumptions?
Sure. I don't know if you can call them up?
I, I'm trying to, oh, there you go.
Or hand it over to me?
Yeah, I'll hand it over to you.
Are they going on the screen, right?
Not yet. I can do it.
Do folks have them on the screen?
No. Your bottom.
But I'm, but I'm trying to call them up. I'm having a difficult time doing it. I have it on my screen, but that's about it.
Right, so all you probably see now is the agenda, right?
Right.
Okay, here, can you see that?
Yes, I can see the agenda.
Oh, but okay, but not the, um, all right, hold on.
Lynn, you have to stop sharing that and then share new, new screen.
I got it. Should see the budget assumptions now?
Yeah, right, okay, I have it, yep. Um, again, this is more in line with a level service budget, these assumptions. Um, they are done in a numeric presentation, which I will get to after we go through the text here. But with, starting with anything is our, our main source is being the property tax revenues. We're going to start, um, looking at the, the property tax calculation under proposition two and a half, which allows us to raise nearly one point three million dollars in additional taxation, um, of which the select board and finance committee and, uh, town manager have a goal at this point in time minimally to only utilize one point seven five of the allowable two point five percent. Um, that amount is roughly, I believe it's three hundred, should be three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars. Um, looks like there's a typo there, um, which we will allude to a little bit later on. I am currently estimating that for state aid, even though we were level funded this fiscal year, or FY twenty-one at this point in time from FY twenty, um, I am hopeful that the state will minimally give us thirty dollars per pupil, which amounts to about eighty-four thousand dollars, and I'm including that in the assumptions. Most of the local receipts are flat. We would anticipate that there would be some increase in, um, ambulance revenues and a minor increase, which is kind of up in the air at this point in time, um, from MGM. Uh, we are anticipating the MGM payment for FY twenty-one within a couple of weeks. Uh, but FY twenty-two is a whole nother story that would yet to be developed. Uh, new growth for FY twenty-two is estimated at a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That is a conservative estimate, as most of these are. Um, we will be utilizing no reserves at this point in time within the budget assumptions to balance the budget. And the Stormwater Enterprise Fund will be covering forty-six point five percent of its budgets through its fees, which would then have some impact on the, on the tax subsidy that is normally received that makes up the remaining part of the budget. School special revenues are expected to remain level. Um, wages for both the school and non-school, um, employees are estimated to increase three percent per the collective bargaining agreements in place, and the step increases that are allowed within those collective bargaining agreements. That amount is a little over a million dollars, just in wait, in anticipated wage increases for FY two thousand and twenty-two. Um, I did, as I have in the recent past, allow for a minor increase in other expenses of a half a percent to cover kind of the ancillary new expenses, um, and to cover minor cost of inflation that we may witness. Um, the biggest budget increase is really going to be within the employee and the retiree benefits. Um, that total increase is going to be roughly six hundred and eighty thousand dollars, and it's made up of multiple components. It is a increase in the county retirement system of eight percent. Liability insurance expected to increase about seven point five percent. Health insurance for employees estimated at this point in time at six percent, estimated for retirees at five percent. Medicare, um, is estimated along with the salaries at three percent. And then the OPEB trust fund, um, would, would be five hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred, which is an increase of twelve thousand, five hundred from FY twenty-one. The total debt service would see an increase, and these are actual numbers that we've already incurred and have on our schedules, of five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Four hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars is attributable mainly to the dr, is attributable to the general fund, um, and mainly attributable to debt exclusions for the adult center and the, uh, the DPW facility. Other debt that we incurred in FY twenty-one, or FY twenty, I should say, that is not debt excluded, included debt for the, uh, LED lighting within town and for the capping of the landfill. As I mentioned earlier, the OPEB trust fund is calculated at five hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred. Uh, the select board will be reviewing the policy later on during this. But again, this is only a twelve thousand, five hundred increase from the current fiscal year. Uh, the operational stabilization fund, uh, in FY twenty, or FY twenty-one, and we have not succeeded yet, but there was a goal of putting two hundred and fifty thousand dollars into the operational stabilization fund from operating revenues. Um, that probably will not happen this fiscal year, but that goal is being carried forward into FY twenty-two. The capital contribution is estimated at one point nine two percent, I'm sorry, one point nine two million dollars, which is roughly three percent of the general fund revenues. Um, overall, there is some excess money available in the capital stabilization fund, and that capital plan should be in the vicinity of a little over two million dollars. From a numeric presentation, I don't know if you can get into the spreadsheet.
Hold on one second, I'll pull it up.
Lynn, can you increase the size of that on the screen, please?
A better?
Much. That's even better. Thank you. Um, with, within the FY twenty-one budget, uh, there was a goal of the selectmen originally started to only utilize one point seven five percent of the, uh, full two and a half percent proposition, two and a half allowable increase. Um, that number was amended to one point eight eight, um, percent, and it looked like we weren't going to make it up to a week or so ago. Um, the numbers that I have presented here, um, our new growth that is being presented down at the Department of Revenue at this point in time is about ninety-nine thousand dollars higher than what is presented in, in this estimate. And that will allow the select board and the finance committee town manager to meet their goal of utilizing only one point eight eight percent or three hundred and eleven thousand, six hundred dollars in unused levy capacity. I just bring that to folks' attention because, um, a lot of these numbers really now have, should have another hundred thousand dollars in additional revenues. Um, and therefore, the, the so-called, uh, estimated deficit for FY twenty-two is going to be roughly a hundred thousand dollars less. So numerically, um, taking what I had mentioned in the text, um, we would be able to have our property taxes increased to roughly over fifty-eight million dollars. Um, the state aid number would be, uh, and this is the governor's number that we are utilizing, the last governor's number in his revised budget. The net state aid amount is. seven million one hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars. That includes the increase, I'm sorry, it's an increase of the eighty-four thousand dollars of FY twenty-one. The slight increase in local receipts. You will notice that there is zero amount for the solid waste recycling, is that amount is now built into the local receipts. There will be a warrant article on the town meeting floor at the next town meeting to discontinue the use of an enterprise fund for the solid waste. So it is really just an offset between the higher number, this higher number here and this, and this loss of the, the revenues from the solid waste enterprise fund. That relatively gives us around seventy-eight million dollars inclusive of the water and the sewer and the school special revenue funds and the stormwater of about seventy-eight million dollars. If we scroll down a little bit further. And looking at the budgets, again, as I alluded to, the three percent increase in salaries, half a percent increase in the other expenses, the employee benefits, the debt service, and all this is in the detail on page two and three, if you want to look at some of the detail. But bringing down all those totals, inclusive of the amount that we are going to be applying for capital, the one point nine two million dollars, an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars going into the Operational Stabilization Fund. Lynn, if you could just go back to the bottom of page one, or maybe even page two. Right about, scroll down a little. Right, scroll down a little bit more. A little bit more. Right there, that's good. Taking into consideration all those assumptions for the FY twenty-two expenditure side, we would have on the uses about seventy-eight point eight million dollars. That would leave us of shortfall of about four hundred and forty-three thousand dollars originally. The three hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is the, the goal of the Select Board to have an unused capacity, the one point seven five percent of the two point five percent allowable increase. So if we back that number out, which is their goal, we would start the assumptions or going into the fiscal year with a shortfall of just over, actually, it's going to be just over seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars because of that ninety, ninety-nine thousand dollars increase in, in new growth. I will just say that the numbers are conservative. We have been very consistent with this over the years of starting a, a, a budget process in October, November with these types of numbers. And for many reasons, mostly different every year, other than the fact that these are conservative estimates, we have usually been able to balance the budget with near-level service monies provided to each department. The only other thing that I want to mention, I normally go through and do a Proposition Two and a Half update as part of this presentation. The tax, the evaluation into the Department of Revenue that is hopefully going to be certified within a day or so. The taxable valuation went up from FY twenty, one point four percent. That would push off hitting the maximum allowable tax levy ceiling, which is the twenty-five thousand dollars times the valuation. That would push us off into FY two thousand and twenty-six. Just want to make that known that, that, that will have that type of impact. The good news is, is that currently we are witnessing house prices that are exceeding three percent of the assessed value in calendar year two thousand and twenty. Calendar year two thousand and twenty is the basis for the FY twenty-two valuation, taxable valuation process. So it is believed minimally that in FY twenty-two, the taxable valuation will go up greater than three percent, further pushing off the, the maximum levy ceiling another year, possibly even two, to give us a five or a six-year window, assuming no growth in market value over that timeframe in which we can still be allowed to raise Proposition Two and a Half revenues to the maximal amount. With that, I know it's a lot to digest. I will be happy to take questions on any of this and try to give more detail as the questions become known.
Okay, thank you, Paul. What I was thinking is I'd like to invite our guests to get first chance at asking questions. So I, I was thinking to have the Finance Committee start, and then the School Board, and then the Select Board. So.
Thanks.
So I don't know if you want to start with Andrew, if you have anything, or?
Yeah, I just, so Paul's been great at helping us with this. We actually went over these recently, or meeting last week. Although I did have a question, Paul. I, I know, of course, that the Select Board's goal is to raise the taxes limited to one point seven five, which is a goal we are very happy about. What did you mention was one point eight eight percent?
Again, last year we started off, or I could say at the be.
Last year.
Yeah, well, it was actually FY twenty-one. We actually started off with a goal of one point seven five also.
That's right, that's right.
You may recall that we were having difficulty in meeting that goal. And when I say one point eight eight, we cut it in half from the previous year where it was two percent. We cut it in half, it was actually one point eight seven five, became the revised goal. And I'm just happy to say that we will now be able to meet that revised goal in FY twenty-one.
Okay, good, yeah. I'm sorry, I, for some, I just wanted to make sure that wasn't about twenty-two and.
Right.
So yeah, from the Finance Committee perspective, we, we shared with the Select Board a couple of months ago, our independent financial analysis, which, which of course is laser focused on basically pushing off the fiscal cliff ten years, and we basically, by our analysis, felt that as long as we kept the increase this year less than one point eight three percent, we'd be okay. So we're very happy with the one point seven five percent. And I certainly invite anyone else on our board to ask any questions, but and we appreciate the Select Board and the School Committee's assistance in meeting this goal.
Anyone else from the Finance Committee have any other questions for Paul? Okay, well, if you have any later, we can do that. So Ryan, any comments from the School Committee, any questions, you want to start us off there?
I don't have any questions. Thank you, Paul, for all this information. I think it's the, we appreciate this, we appreciate all the hard work. You know, the thing that we're looking at right now is trying to figure out what type of school we're gonna have next year because it has implications on our budget and staffing and all that kind of stuff, so this is very helpful, but I, at this time, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Understood.
And any other questions from any other members of the School Committee? Okay.
The only other thing that I will point out that I've estimated, the FY twenty-one tax rate to be twenty-four dollars and seventy-four cents, this as an FYI, of which two dollars and thirty-eight cents is directly related to debt exclusions. The rate for FY twenty, tax, the full tax rate was twenty-four dollars and twenty-one cents, of which two dollars and seventeen cents was from debt exclusions. So it is very possible, given the allowable increase in FY twenty-two, that you will see a tax rate above twenty-five. But again, roughly about two dollars and thirty-eight cents, two dollars and thirty cents, next year will be attributable to debt exclusions.
Okay, and Paul, could you just explain the debt exclusion is for some of the major capital?
Debt exclusion is the amount of our debt service that the voters at a general election have voted to exclude from the normal Proposition Two and a Half calculations. So it is above and beyond the two and a half percent increase. We are allowed to raise all the debt service for any of the exclusions that they had voted previously. And it's for the life of the debt, which sometimes can last twenty years. It is not perpetual, like a, a general override, it is just for the life of the debt.
Okay, and can you give us an example of some of the, the bigger items that we have debt on? I mean, I think people know, but.
Yeah, the biggest item is probably, probably the high school. Next, followed by the DPW, the Council on Aging. Recently, the Wolf Swamp Field Project came online. I think that makes up just about the majority of the projects that would be debt excluded.
Great, thank you for that clarification. So, members of the Select Board, do folks have questions for Paul? I don't know if I need a roll call, but maybe we should just do that. Mark Strange, any questions?
Yeah, just a quick one. So going back to the, the sewer revenue, Paul, and I, you may have answered this in previous meetings. I'm just curious as to why the, the water revenue has increased, but the sewer revenue has decreased?
Sewer revenue more than likely went down because of the debt service attributable to it. We would have, we would have increased the wages by three percent, again, a half a percent increase, half a percent increase in the other expenses, but it was more than likely, this number anyways, more than likely being driven by a reduction in the debt service. Once the actual numbers come out, it might be a different story if we get hit with a larger than a half a percent increase, increase from Springfield. But anyway, using the assumptions that I portrayed, that's where roughly the sewer amount is for FY twenty-two.
Okay, that's it. Steve Morantz, any questions?
No questions. I just want to thank Paul for all this hard work in putting this presentation together.
Okay, great. And Richard Foster, any questions?
No questions.
Okay, and Mark Gold, any questions?
Yeah, I do. Paul, the, the biggest items on our budget increase year over year are clearly salaries. We're a service-oriented organization, so, you know, we, we pay our people and that's our biggest salary. And salaries are going up, and there's two components of that. One is, one is what we used to call cost of living, but there's also steps increases. But the other component of paying our people is, is the benefits. And those are going up at very, very high rates, seven or eight percent, as you indicated. So my question is, what percentage of salaries is our benefits? And if we looked at our cost of, of employees, how much, what's the composite at which that's going up? In other words, if it's three percent in direct payments to the employees, there's also a percentage in the benefits that they get. What is that overall, then, percentage of increase to our employees?
Let me, maybe I can answer the first part of the question first, which employee benefits, and this now includes liability insurance, which is about a seven hundred thousand dollar line item, is twelve million, two hundred thousand dollars. Our wages are anticipated for FY twenty-two to be roughly, this is on the very bottom. Lynn, if you keep on scrolling down, it's on the very bottom of this. Wages are anticipated to be almost forty-two million dollars. So we're looking at employee benefits roughly costing, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight million dollars, I'm sorry, twenty-seven or twenty-eight percent of the wages overall. Like I said, it, it does include liability insurance, but to some component, liability insurance includes workers' comp, which is, again, I don't want to say it's an employee benefit, but it is driven by the wages also. So it's minimally twenty-five to thirty percent, Mark.
Yeah, so I, I guess my point was that if twenty-eight percent of the cost of employees is going up by, let's say, seven and a half percent, and seventy-two percent of the employees' costs is going up by three percent, the composite increase is probably, what's that, four, four and a half percent, something like that?
Yeah, it, it's, you're right, yeah, it probably is about four, four and a half percent.
I just think we need to keep that in, in mind when we're, you know, we always say we're seventy-five or eighty percent employees, and those costs are going up by four and a half percent, you know, and we're trying to retain our, our tax level at a one point seven five percent increase. This, this is a formula, formula that's bound to, to fail at, at some point if we continue this.
Okay, thank you, Mark. The only question I had is, there was a mention of the, in the retirement numbers, it said an eight percent increase for retirement, and I wasn't quite sure how that works.
The county, the county retirement system's budget is allowed by law to go up eight percent. The big question is, and, and we have a portion of that eight percent, that I think it's roughly about thirteen percent, that our, our retirement wages are roughly thirteen percent of the total. That if everything remained equal, that we maintained our thirteen percent level, and the county retirement system went to their fullest capacity that they can raise eight percent, our assessment would go up eight percent. I, I would anticipate that our percentage may go down a little bit because of the loss of, of, of employees, mainly in the daycare program and other areas, that I, I would think that our percentage of the whole would go down slightly, and we would not see that, that eight percent increase. But again, I budgeted necessarily somewhat conservative and nearly worst-case scenario.
Okay, thank you. And, and, yeah, thank you for all your work. And it also is encouraging to see that the property values of our town, you know, continue to go up, which is gonna make that, that ceiling a little bit further down the road as, as this continues to happen. And, and that's not a coincidence, you know, that happens because all the folks at this meeting tonight have worked hard to make sure that we provide quality services to members of our community and, and people want to live here, and they like the services they got, so, so that's great. I don't know if there's any other questions or comments. Lynn, did you have anything to say as we shut out this section of the meeting?
I think it looks like there's a question or a comment from a select, a School Committee member.
Oh, good.
Deanna.
Thank you, Lynn. Sorry, Tom, it just occurred to me when Paul was going over and answering for another question, a, a question I, I had. Is it okay to ask it?
Oh, yes, please, Jen.
Okay, and it might not even be, you know, forgive me, Paul, if this isn't the right time to ask it. But I was looking at the, the solid waste and recycling line, and it just made me think, have y'all looked into any savings coming from composting? Or is composting part of the recycling? Just because I know that there, there was a, a project going on and, and composting could provide some kind of savings. I just didn't know if y'all had looked into that yet.
Jen, I, I actually don't have an answer to that question. I don't know, I don't deal directly on a day-to-day basis with the Recycling Committee, who would be overseeing that. And I have not heard anything from our DPW Director one way or another. I know that they try to get rid of it as much as they can of the things that are, or the grass and the leaves. Obviously, the leaves are composted in, in the farmland, but during the non-fall season, I know that they try to do their best in order to take the material from, from grass clippings and so on and so forth, and get those in a composting type of scenario to someone, meaning that deliver it to someone who's not going to charge us to dispose of it. A few years back, we were actually being charged to dispose of that material, and they had been working on trying to have somebody take care of that, compost it, but at no cost for, for the town.
Thanks, Paul, and I, I'm sorry, I should have, I should have been more clear. Composting of like foods and, and trash from the schools and from the.
Okay, I'm sorry. I am unaware if anybody is looking into that at this point in time.
Okay, thanks, Paul.
Okay, thanks for your question. All questions are good questions, so I'm glad you offered that one out. I know that there are a lot of towns that have citizens compost, you know, they have like compost things set up in their yard that would reduce the amount of weight of trash that gets. that would reduce the amount of weight of trash that gets removed from the town, so there would be savings there. And, um, so, yeah, it is something I think would be good to look into in the future. Um, okay, and Lynn, any other, uh, closing statements on, on this part of the meeting?
Um, no, I mean, I guess other than, I, I would say that I'm sure as all of you will be doing, Paul and I will be continuing to monitor how, um, the rest of this fiscal year plays out, and I'm hopeful that we won't have to make any substantial changes like we did, um, last, last, uh, spring. But, um, uh, things are fairly uncertain still, uh, just in responding to the pandemic and what it looks like for, um, the economic impact that we're all feeling, so we'll all keep monitoring it.
All right, great. Um, and so if there's no other, uh, questions, um, I guess we could close the joint meeting, uh, for folks. Appreciate your participation, and, um, you know, if you've seen the calendar, we'll be, um, discussing these issues for quite a while. So, all right, thank you. All right, so now.
I think we have to adjourn, any school committee members want to make a motion? Go adjourn, anyone?
I move to adjourn the November sixteenth school committee meeting.
Sarah Second?
Okay.
Discussion, sitting down, call for a vote, Gianna?
Yes.
Darwin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, and finance.
We'd better do the same.
Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn our finance committee meeting?
I'd move to adjourn the finance committee adjourn.
Second. Discussion, voting, Bill? Bill may have signed off already, Don?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Armon?
Yes.
Eileen?
Yes.
I as well, vote affirmatively, thank you, very adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for joining us.
Thanks a lot.
All right, so now, um, if we went back to our, um, agenda that we were working off of, we go to look at the interviews for the cable advisory, and I don't know if, uh, if Andre, Graham, Shawna, or Erin are here, Lynn, can you?
Yes, so I, I, Andre is here, uh, Erin, um, is here. Um, that looks like it. I did have, um, a response from one other, uh, who said December seventh would work, oh, and Shawna's here as well.
Oh, okay, great, okay, so then why don't we, um, continue with this? And we, the first would be for the Audit Committee, um, and we have Andre Greco. And if you could just introduce yourself and tell us, uh, give us your address and town, and why you're interested in being part of the Audit Committee. You'll need to unmute yourself. There's so much to unmute, too.
Here we go, is that better, can you hear me?
Oh, yes, good, thank you.
Andre Greco, eight seventy-five Maple Road, appreciate the, the opportunity to be able to discuss these possible committee openings with you tonight. I actually put in for two, not knowing, uh, where the town felt, uh, my background and skillset could be, uh, most valuable. Uh, first was Park and Rec, and second was Audit. Um, as you see from my application, I have done a significant amount of volunteer work in the past. Uh, most, uh, in, most of that happened in Enfield. And then I moved out of Connecticut to Ohio for three years, came back to, uh, Enfield, got re-acclimated, resettled into, uh, a new job, and then just, uh, last June of 2019, we bought our house in Long Meadow. And, uh, honestly, I, I miss serving, I miss being involved, I miss helping. So that was the initial reason why I took a look at what the possible committee openings were, saw Park and Rec, and I have a very strong background in Park and Rec from coaching and serving on Little League boards. And then I saw Audit as well, I've served, um, as a finance committee chair, and also on the Citizens Advisory Audit Committee in Enfield. Um, I, uh, coincidentally, I got a text from the Chair of the Audit Committee today, and we connected via phone, and he gave me some updates on the committee and, uh, time requirements and knowledge base. And I don't know if it's, if it's wanted, but I'm fairly certain I could do both. Uh, the Audit Committee does not seem to have a significant time requirement, uh, attached to it. He had mentioned that they meet maybe four or five times a year, uh, so that's pretty easy to fit into a flexible schedule and combine it with, you know, works on the park board as well.
Okay, great, well, that's good, I'm glad that you were able to connect with the Chair of the Committee, so, uh, do we have any questions from the Select Board? Any members? Anything they want to ask?
Hi, Mark.
Yeah, Tom, if I could, I, I, thank you for, thank you for applying, Andre. I, I guess my question is, is what specifically, after speaking to Mr. Landen, um, uh, you know, attracted you to the Audit Committee and still does, what areas of, of their activity are you most, uh, interested in impacting?
So i- in our conversations, he had mentioned that there are challenges, and I asked him to expound on that a little bit. And, you know, he mentioned areas of audit, just from an insurance perspective and making sure that everything was copacetic in terms of right numbers in right areas. And, you know, running a finance committee for, for four years, you get pretty used to looking at, uh, Excel spreadsheets and, and questioning individual line items to make sure that the, the information that's there is accurate and that, uh, it's not something that needs further due diligence.
Okay, uh, good, and Andre, um, now you said you, you know, you have this experience in Enfield. I, how many people in Enfield, how big is that community compared to ours?
Boy, it's, it's, uh, closer to 25,000 versus the, the 15 that we have here.
Okay, good, yeah, you bring some, uh, great experience. Uh, and then as far as the Parks and Recreation, I know you've kind of touched on that, um, and your, your interest in that, I don't know if anyone has any questions in regards to him beyond the Parks and Recreation Commission? Any additional questions, Tom? All right, well, it's really nice to meet you, uh, thank you for your, um, your interest in volunteering for the town, and we'll make a decision like in a couple weeks, in the September meeting, okay, so.
Great, thanks very much for your time.
Okay, nice meeting you.
All right, have a great night.
Yeah, all right, and next we have the Cable Advisory Committee and Graham Jesmer. Um, are you with us?
Uh, Graham was, had asked to be continued to December seventh.
Oh, my, that's correct, yes, uh, but the Housing Authority, and is Shawna here, Guttowski? Jesus.
All right, I just had to find the unmute button.
Okay, that's all right.
I'm using my cellphone, my computer is having internet trouble, so.
All right, so Shawna, if you could just give us your name and your address and your interest in being in this committee.
Sure, my name is Shawna Guttowski, and I'm at, uh, one ninety-five Overbrook Road in Long Meadow. And I actually saw the posting for the vacancy while I was looking for where I needed to go to vote, being new in town. And I was interested immediately. Um, I have a sixteen-year background in real estate, I run a team of seventeen agents, and, um, we sell about two hundred to two hundred and ten houses a year in Western Mass, and have just branched out into Connecticut. Um, so I'm also licensed there. Um, I also, for quite a few years, um, worked in insurance, in homeowners insurance as a broker, and have always had a passion for the public and for housing and homes and the laws surrounding it and helping the community. Um, I've been looking for something in town to get involved in. My daughter is a senior in high school, so I, she's in private school, so I've missed out on the chance to, you know, get involved with the town that way. Um, so I thought it was the perfect thing for me to reach out and, and try to get involved with, because housing, you know, anything housing-related is right up my alley, and anything people-related where I'm with the public is also, um, you know, where I thrive and where I do well, so that's what prompted me to fill out the app. I thought it was a shot in the dark, so I'm really excited that you guys invited me to the meeting and, and let me introduce myself.
Okay, great, thank you very much, uh, any questions from members of the Board? For Shawna?
Tom?
Yes, good, Mark Gold.
Yeah, Shawna, thanks again for, for applying, I just want to make sure, A, you understand the issues before the Housing Authority. I, I might suggest you speak to one of the members, I think Ed Klein is the Chair, if you haven't. But the other thing is that this appointment is a, is a one-time pass, Housing Authority is a elected position. Just wanted to ask if you were prepared to run for reelection the next time around.
Sure, why not?
Well, you never know, okay.
President next.
That's, that's, they all start somewhere, local office, that's, uh, uh. All right, any other questions for Shawna? All right, well, thank you very much for, uh, your interest, and it sounds like you've got a lot of experience with real estate, and, um, you've contributed quite a bit to the community. Um, we have another candidate, uh, and it is, uh, Aaron Kobler. And Aaron, are you with us this evening?
I'm here.
Okay, and you can start with introducing yourself and your address, and then tell us, uh, your interest in this committee.
Sure, uh, my name is Aaron Kobler, I live at nineteen Pleasantview Avenue. Um, I, uh, was interested in this committee, um, I don't know, some of you may know that I was the former outreach coordinator for, um, the Long Meadow Adult Center. Um, I'm a social worker, and in that position, I really got a good perspective on, um, housing in, in the community, especially for, um, the older folks in the community. Um, and I thought it was important to bring a social work perspective in terms of, as people are aging, we want to allow them and help them stay in the community, um, and how, um, Long Meadow might be able to help them, them do that through the Housing Authority. Um, I saw people apply for elderly housing, um, or disabled housing, and wait, you know, five years. Um, and so, um, anyway, that's, that's where my interest lies, in helping the community in a different way, and, um, understanding that as people age and their income is limited, uh, it's difficult to stay in Long Meadow.
Okay, um, well, thank you, um, good perspectives, uh, any questions for com- members of the Board? Yes, Mark Gold.
I'm gonna ask you another same question, are you aware, were you aware it's an elected position, and are you prepared to run for reelection? I, I guess the next June, because this appointment only covers you through June.
Um, it is a short appointment, um, I was not aware that it was an elected position. I spent some time on the phone with Ed Klein, talking about what the Housing Authority, um, has done up to this point. Um, and I'm, I'm sort of excited about the, the potential for what it could do, so, so I could, um, I could definitely see myself running, um, based on the Housing Authority's percent, potential in Long Meadow. It's interesting, because people would call me all the time when they were looking for housing, when I was in my outreach position, and to be honest, I didn't even know we had one. Um, there's not much information on the website about it, and, um, according to Ed, they haven't been very active. It's sort of, you know, cycled up and down, right now, they're, right now, they're not so active, I guess, but, um, I, I just, I just think that there, there's some potential there.
Uh, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you, thank both of you for your interest in the Housing Authority. And, um, you know, we're always trying to encourage more women to run from offices in town, so, uh, you know, regardless of the appointment now, hopefully you'll still consider being part of this committee in the future. Uh, we'll be making a decision in, in, uh, early December, and we'll let you know that, all right?
Thank you.
You're welcome, I know, I know. Okay, so, uh, so that is that, we, our joint meeting. So next we come to Select Board comments, uh, any Select Board comments for this evening? Mark Gold?
Yeah, I, I just think that publicly we ought to acknowledge Catherine, uh, our, our town clerk, uh, you know, the, we can, she conducted a slew of elections, but, you know, I think the latest election, the national election, was a, 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 pardon the expression, but a fire drill almost on her, her case, when we had thousands of mail-in ballots and lots of people voting early, plus in-person voting, and I think, you know, just a shout-out to Kathy Ingram for just a phenomenal job, everything I heard, all phases of the election, including the counting, went extraordinarily smoothly, and I think we, you know, need to recognize what we did.
All right, yeah, thank you. Uh, any other comments from the Select Board? Okay, uh, I just, I have one here that we received a letter, um, to inform us that a firefighter of ours, Benjamin Sloan, was selected to be the recipient of the Richard Bangs Award for being the outstanding student in the Massachusetts Firefighting Academy recruit, recruit class of S eighteen. And, uh, so his achievement in both academic exams and practical skills. And so, uh, this is a firefighter who'll be joining the ranks for us, uh, when he graduates, and, uh, congratulations, and we appreciate your hard work in the academy. Now, that's all I have to say. Uh, so we can move to the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. Uh, Town Manager Report for November sixteenth. Um, the treasure collector Cheryl Kudnick has submitted her retirement notice. She's served the town for twenty-three years, in the last five years, she has been the treasure collector. Her last day with us will be December eighth, and we thank Cheryl greatly for her public service to the town, and congratulate her on a very well-deserved retirement. We have posted the position, and we will be, uh, taking applicants, uh, for, uh, for an interview process. The CARES Act funding, we have received our second round of funding, that covers the period of July first to September thirtieth, 2020. We received $179,376. The first round of funding, um, back in, what was that, August that we received that money? That was, uh, $411,477, so this was out of the 1.4 million that we had, um, been earmarked to, um, apply for. Greenwood Playground, this structure at Greenwood Park was damaged during the August fourth storm. A damage claim was fired, filed with the town's insurer, and we've received funds to cover the repair minus the $5,000 deductible. Due to the age of the structure, though, it's going to take a little bit longer to get replacement parts in. We have placed that order, but we don't expect to receive them, uh, until sometime this winter, and as soon as weather permits, the, uh, playground will be restored. Um, Long Meadow Street, Conver Street Corridor improvements, we've signed a contract with Fussin O'Neill to provide engineering services for the improvements to this, um, intersection area, um, it, for final design. Cost is not to exceed $246,900. It's going to get us all the way through 75% design submission, and then 100% design submission, preparation of the right-of-way plans, et cetera. Um, it, this project is on the TIP schedule for FY 2025, and the un, the money for the engineering work's coming from the original MGM Surrounding Community payment, which was about $850,000. Uh, we've, for MIA Safety Grants, we've submitted two projects through the MIA Safety Grant application process. One is for a dash-mounted camera for a police vehicle, and the other is for a thermal imaging camera for the Department of Public Works to help identify heat loss, so we can avoid, avoid, uh, pipe freeze-ups and flooded buildings. And MIA Rewards, we have received $31,683 back on our workers' compensation and property and casualty, casualty insurance costs. This, um, money is applicable to our premium reductions for the next fiscal year. And, um, we receive these, uh, rewards back based on participation in training programs and other, um, items that can prevent loss, uh, such as inspection logs for routine building inspections and, um, instituting best practices in certain areas of, um, municipal services. So, uh, that money is a direct credit to the hard work of all of the staff in the, um, in the departments. Thank you. So, uh, that money is a direct credit to the hard work of all of the staff in the, um, in the departments. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Uh, any questions from the Select Board on Town Manager's Report? Any comments?
Other question, Tom?
Yes.
Uh, Lynn, in terms of the CARES money we have received, has this actually, has this covered all our expenses to date?
Uh, we do have, uh, we are able to apply for FEMA assistance as well, but that only covers, uh, seventy-five percent. And so, Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can submit that other twenty-five percent through CARES funding, uh, to be reimbursed for that. So it covers anything that's a COVID-nineteen-related expense that wasn't prior, previously budgeted and is not permanent.
We, we are anticipating additional FEMA money, um, to go along with this. Lynn was correct, that FEMA was covering seventy-five percent of many of those eligible costs, and the other twenty-five percent was built into this CARES Act money. The other thing also, and a big expenditure, is that the, uh, School Department received directly about a six-hundred-thousand-dollar grant to take care of their needs in relation, relationship to the coronavirus fighting. And they've basically exhausted that six-hundred-thousand dollars, um, and are now jumping on the remaining portion of our one point four million. So it, we've hit about a million dollars' worth of expenditures already, adding up to FEMA money, what's here, and then the six-hundred-thousand dollars directly that went to the schools.
Money, um, that, the CARES Act, uh, expires on December thirtieth. And as of right now, there are, um, no hope, there is no hope yet of extending that into the new year.
Okay. A- any other questions from the Select Board? Town Manager's Report? There are a couple of things. Uh, one is, um, I hope Fussin, Fussin O'Neil are the same engineers that did the, the intersection, you know, where, Converse and Dwight come together in Justin Street, because that is just, uh, you know, I'm very familiar. And that's just so much better than it's ever been. Uh, so I hope it's them. I know that they used to have an office in town, too. So I don't know, you know, I, hopefully they'll do that. Now, you mentioned that in two thousand and twenty-five, there'd be, uh, tip funds for redoing Long Meadow Street. Now, would that, I know that we have other, uh, work to do, uh, before we could receive money to do the entire length. But do you know if that, what's scheduled in two thousand and twenty-five could look at the whole length of Long Meadow Street if we had all the pre-engineering done?
Uh, no, this Long Meadow Street at Converse Street project is a separate project. It's one phase of the, um, the remaining piece of Long Meadow Street from the Enfield Line to Converse Street. Um, so this is just the Long Meadow Street. They, they call, I think it's called the L Project. Um, this one is scheduled on the tip for FY two thousand and twenty-five. The other project is not scheduled on the tip, and, um, this was one that had a warrant article for engineering services. Um, it was a four-phase project, the Enfield Street to Converse Street. That was, um, that warrant article did not pass at the annual town meeting.
Oh, great, yes. So maybe the next town meeting, we can get that moving forward. Because I know people have complained to me, you know, that some of the lights aren't, uh, aren't working properly. And I know that, uh, the report was, we couldn't even buy parts for some of those, uh, stoplights. Um, the other thing is, I noticed that, uh, on Converse Street, they're replacing the sidewalk. Um, and that was hard to, you know, DOT had put a new sidewalk in on Converse Street, and it was damaged. And so that is going in. Hopefully it'll be completed, um, and have a chance to cure before we start using salt again. Uh, is there anything that you know about that? I know the town is not paying for any of that work.
Right. It, it was through Mass DOT, yeah. So Paul Tazar should have been back. It was last week, Thursday, they were here, um, making those repairs, replacing that area that was not done properly.
Yeah, it all got pitted. Um, all right. Great. And then the other thing is the, you know, you mentioned the, the MIA Rewards, um, uh, workers' comp. And, and so that's basically, part of that is that people have not been injured, and they've been following good safety habits. Am I reading that right?
The, um, the rewards is direct, is a, is a direct result of, um, employees taking advantage of training opportunities. And so we get credit back because we are instituting good, safe practices. The, uh, not having loss will hit our rates when we get, when we renew, if I'm explaining that right.
The underlying intent is, is, um, loss prevention, all these trainings and things of that nature. Um, we have been successful in the workers' compensation area with reducing our, what's known as their Experience Mod. People are familiar with that. Anytime our Experience Mod, which is based upon claims, goes above one, we get a, uh, it was a surcharge. Uh, in FY twenty-one, our Experience Mod, um, after about three or four years, um, finally went down below one again. So some of these trainings are paying off in that regard. And, you know, the, the other ones are for loss prevention of buildings and vehicles, and, you know, all sorts of different things that, um, we're insured for.
Okay, good. Well, thank you. Um, so if there's no other questions from the Town Manager on the report, we will move to old business. We need a motion to approve the minutes of November second, two thousand and twenty.
I move we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of November second, two thousand and twenty.
Okay, the second?
Second.
Okay, Steve. And then, uh, any discussion? Hearing none. Uh, Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, that's great. And now we'll move on to some appointments we have. And the first would be for the Board of Health, uh, Anastasio Angelidis. Um, and I would think we would look for a three-year term expiding, expiring. And, uh, could I have a motion to, uh, appoint Anastasio?
Well, I'll move we appoint Dr. Anastasio Angelidis for a three-year term, expiring June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Board of Health.
Okay, I'm ready to second.
Second to motion.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, can I just clarify, when is that term starting?
I need to start.
It started, it ends six-thirty-twenty-three.
But it was started now.
The terms are available now. They're vacant.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay. Uh, and now we need a Cultural Council, uh, Evelyn Pratt?
I'll move we approve the appointment of Evelyn Pratt to the Cultural Council for a three-year term, expiring June two thousand and twenty-two.
At a second?
Second to motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay, and then we have the, uh, Local Community Mitigation Advisory Committee, uh, one, five-year term. And, um, you know, I, we have two, two excellent candidates for this committee. And so, you know, I just, you know, David Russell had talked about, he knew the status of the current vote or the current payments, and he was talking about perhaps looking at some, um, some grants that were available. So I'd like to nominate David Russell to be on this committee, if there's a second.
Second.
All right, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Okay, um, can we do a roll call vote, Deb?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
No.
Steve?
No.
Mark Gold?
No.
Richard?
I second it. I'm gonna have to vote yes.
Okay, so then we have a motion for Louis Cornet.
I'll move that we, uh, I'll second Steve.
I'll second that.
All right, we have, uh, okay. Uh, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Deb, will you do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
That, congratulations. And, um, the next thing would be to look at, uh, the review of approved, uh, to approve the revised Select Board policies for the capital and OPEP. So if we look at the first draft with the capital improvement, um, let me just see if I can share my screen here. And, um, now this is, increase the size here. Make it easy for, uh, I'll take my glasses off now. Uh, so this is the, um, capital improvement budget policy, and folks have had a chance to look this over. I don't know if you folks have any, um, comments about, about this. Um, I know Paul Mustersik, uh, you may be interested in making comments or?
Um, most, I mean, yeah, mo- most of this was basically a little cleanup. Um, we modified the wording in the bullet number two to just stay at a minimum of five-year. Um, multi-year plan would be, um, would, would be available. Like I said, a minimum. But the biggest thing is dealing with the premiums, which is about two-thirds of the way down. There's a section that was added, any premium received upon the sale of bonds or notes rounded down to the next ten thousand dollar increment. After deducting, um, the cost of preparing and issuing and marketing the bonds and notes, um, will be used towards the, to finance the bonds and/or notes, and the amount authorized will be reduced by like a mile.
Okay. Uh, any questions on this for Paul, or any questions about this budget policy?
I'll make a motion that we accept the capital improvement budget policy as revised.
Okay, and we have second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, we'll take a roll call vote, Deb?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, great. Now we can take a look at the second policy here, which is a capital improvements policy. We can get this going here.
Again, a lot of this was cleanup. Um, we set a floor at a minimum of three percent of the general fund operating revenues, less the excludable debt, which is the practices we've been following. Um, incrementally, we would go up by a quarter percent if we could afford it. Uh, some other language, just clarification. The biggest change is probably the one, two, three, four, the fifth paragraph, um, regarding due diligence.
Identifying and disclosing environmental liabilities.
Right.
Apprehensively and completely, you know?
You know, and I believe that was probably in reference, um, after the fact of the DPW. I, you know, I think for the most part, the Select Board is going to approve those anyway. I don't think there was, that's going to change anything. Um, and like I said, it was more wordsmithing a few little other things that already were out, were basically being followed within the policy already.
And then you have this one section highlighted, the master facility.
Yeah, that, you know, this, this is something that, um, is yet to be practiced at this point in time. Um, this master's facility, equipment and infrastructure plan, it's quite an undertaking to get all that information known for the next thirty years. Um, it, it's, it's just, it's basically highlighted because it's something that we've not been able to accomplish at this point in time. But it, it is already within the existing policy.
Okay, so it's within, but it's something, you just highlighted, point out that we have this, but, you know, thirty-year window seems a bit, it's beyond our capability to attain at this point. Okay, uh, any questions on this? Mark Gold?
Yeah, can you go back to the fifth paragraph again, Paul? That was the one, if you're the one scrolling it, or wherever it is. There, there's something about this, first of all, the whole paragraph, I think, is, I'm not sure, I'm thrilled with it. But, but there's something that doesn't make sense, because it says, capital improvement of existing required town assets will not be approved or funded without first identifying, mitigating of all. Isn't it identifying mitigation or mitigation requirements? Or identifying environmental liabilities and leave, I, I just don't understand the word I'm getting there.
Yeah, again, it's, um, it came from here. Maybe the word "and" needs to be inserted without first identifying and mitigating?
Well, the problem is, if we have to identify and mitigate, we'll never approve anything. I mean, you know, if, if our, if we go into something with our eyes open and we know what it is, I think identifying is fine, you know, but clearly to require mitigation before, you know, we approve or fund capital expenditures, as we found out with the DPW, could be a multi, first of all, we might not even be able to mitigate it because of the, because if we don't own the facility or, or wherever it is. I think, I, I understand the concept, I understand the intent, but without first identifying environmental liabilities, it's fine with me. I don't get the word "mitigating." So I, I'd, I'd like to suggest we eliminate the "mitigating of all" words and leave it as identifying environmental liabilities.
Okay, any other comments on that paragraph?
Yeah, I, can I make a comment?
Sure, yes.
Well, I, I actually think the word "and" should be in there. I, I understand, I think I understand what, uh, Mark Gold's saying, but since this is stuff, this isn't like the case, we're gonna buy something. This is stuff that already exists in town, that we have bought, it's existing required town assets, which means we have them. So the town is then going to be asked to spend money to do something to have a capital improvement. At that point in time, this says, we should then make sure that there are no environmental liabilities before we spend money. Or if there are, go and mitigate it before we then spend that money. I, I understand it's a little confusing, because to mitigate the environmental liabilities, we're gonna have to spend some money, I would imagine. So that's a little fuzzy in there. But I, I understand, since these are stuff that we're not buying, this is our town property already. If we're gonna ask the town to spend money on it, it makes sense that if there's an environmental issue, it should be taken care of before we spend more money on capital improvement, capital improvements.
Right, well, and, and the paragraph says, existing or acquired town assets.
That means we already have them, we did acquire. It doesn't say "or acquired," it says "acquired." I don't know if this is right. I don't even know why that's actually there, because.
Yeah, I, I do agree with you in terms of adding, putting a hand in there and mitigating. Um, you know, to an extent, you know, that, that term will help us. Um, but I, I do know that, uh, if I was ever to buy a property that had a tennis court, I would know that they use asbestos in the putting down those courts. And it is kind of a shame that, you know, we didn't have proper advice from anyone who knows anything about tennis courts when we were buying a tennis stadium. Um, we could have saved ourselves a lot of difficulty. And so I, I really feel strongly, this is a good, uh, paragraph to have in there. And, you know, I don't have a problem with the word "mitigating." I don't know what other folks on the committee have to say, or on the board.
Yeah, I, thanks for that, Steve. I, I was, because I, I originally, I agree with what Mark was saying. Uh, but I, I too presume that was, um, those were assets that we hadn't yet acquired. Um, but if we already have them, then that makes sense that we want to identify and mitigate. I agree with you.
Mark Gold?
Yeah, the only reason I'm commenting or arguing this is because I'm looking. is because I'm looking forward to doing something at our current DPW. And the problem we have there is, you know, it's going to take us many, many, many years and perhaps many, many, many dollars to do something there as opposed to just building a solar farm there. And I don't want to be hand tied, have our hands tied by a, a, a paragraph that was thrown in by somebody who doesn't, didn't understand the potential ramifications. I think clearly this select board has had our eyes opened. And, and that's why, you know, by the DPW project, and that's why I thought if they're identified and we have this in their future select boards, we'll have their eyes open. But if we're forced to mitigate it by this policy, the first thing it says to me is we're going to break this policy starting next year, and I think that's nuts. So that's why I, I, I suggested the change idea.
Okay, thanks for making that clearer. Any other comments?
Mark, uh, Gold, can you, um, can you give me the, the hypothetical of what you're talking about specifically? So we want, with the old, with the old DPW site, we want to put a solar farm on it.
Right, but to this, we have to.
So, so environmental liabilities that are there have to be, well, they have to be taken care of whether, no matter what, one, one thing, if they're there.
Not necessarily, by putting a solar farm on there, it, we, we can identify them. The, the law allows us to build a, a solar farm on top of what may be contaminated soil because we can just do, leave it where it is, you can get, you can encapsulate that. But, but to say we, this says we have to mitigate it, which means we've got to have to dig, I mean, you know, there's sixty-five years where the oil changes there. That alone, you know, scares me, to tell you the truth, Steve. And, and normally, we can identify it, we can test it, but we're not obligated by our own policy to do the mitigation. Because this, this doesn't say required by law, for mitigation that's required by law, this says all mitigations. That mitigation probably isn't required by law, but would be required by this policy and would be prohibitive in my opinion.
Right, so legally, if there's, whatever issue may exist on the property, legally, as far as the state's concerned, we can build over it with a solar.
Right, and, and if there are issues legally, we, we're going to have to handle that, whether we have a policy about it or not. So this policy only covers our legal requirements, this policy would go beyond those legal requirements.
Right, so what we need is another word besides mitigate. Um, it's sort of like acknowledge or understand or know that it's there. And if we have to mitigate it by law, obviously we should. If we don't, then we don't have to necessarily do that. But then, so I would agree that mitigate is not necessarily the word, it was like recognize. I mean, you know, if it's there and we have to do something about it, then we obviously need to do something. But if we don't have to do something about it, we can build a solar farm over it. Now legally saying, oh, you gotta dig up the whole thing and get rid of it all, put a farm on top of it, it's fine.
Well, that's, it's not identifying, it says that, Steve. We've, I, you know, it, it says, don't go in there blind, identify what the issues are, but know what you're doing. That's, to me, that was good enough.
Oh, in some ways we're identifying and accepting all of the environmental liabilities? Could that be a way to do it?
I wouldn't put down we're accepting, we're just identifying the liabilities.
Not recognizing.
Recognizing, fine.
Okay, so identifying and recognizing um, all of the environmental liabilities. So we take out mitigating of and put, um, and change those terms. Um, any other comments on that?
The word select board should be two words.
Thank you for watching that, here we go, select board. I can't edit this document, uh, it's a, but uh, okay, so can someone make note of those changes? Uh, is, and then we have a motion to accept this?
Tom, I had one question.
Sure.
Yeah, one statement without prior approval by the select board, I'm confused on why that's in there, can somebody enlighten me?
Rich, I think the intent was that you, that the select board would have full awareness of any potential environmental issue.
Okay, well, it says, okay, assets will not be funded without first identifying all environmental liability without prior approval by the select board. I, I have trouble with that statement, it didn't make sense to me.
Richard, can I suggest that it say, without first identifying and recognizing of all, recognition of all environmental liabilities by the select board?
Yeah, I don't, um, yeah, Mark, I don't know, I just don't understand, I just don't understand that, that whole prior approval or anything by the select board. I mean, we're making a statement, the capital improvements of existing acquired town assets will not be approved or funded without first identifying all environmental liabilities, period. I don't know why there'd be anything in there that says without prior approval by the select board. The select board shouldn't, I mean, is the select board going to tell people you don't have to worry about those or you don't have to identify them?
I'm, I'm not going to argue with you, this wasn't my, my paragraph, no, it wasn't Paul's either, I mean, this came in from Pete Landon, so.
Yeah, I ju- I just don't, I just don't understand the intent, maybe Pete should have answered it, explain it, because the way it's written, it just confuses the daylights out of me on, on what the value of the whole statement is. If there's a conditionary thing that, uh, if you have prior approval from the select board, then we don't have to have to apply that to the whole clause, I guess. Any, anybody else have problems with that, that, uh, sentence?
I, I mean, I.
Well, and I'll relate.
I know, I understand your concern, Richard. Uh, you know, I, I, I don't know that the select board needs to be the person to, to bless the capital improvements or exist, uh, you know, of, of, of this na- nature. I think it just is capital improvements of existing or acquired town assets will not be approved or funded without first id- identifying, if you want to say identifying and recognizing all li- all environmental liabilities, period.
Yeah, yeah, leave it there, period. Then, then it move, then it moves on, I mean, the approval process is totally different, Mark.
Well, make a motion then.
Well, I mean, I'm, we're open to discussion, and you know, the due diligence and identifying disclosure environmental liabilities will be form comprehensive and completely, I think you can throw all those words out because they, they're just self-serving bunch of nice statements, I mean, I, I appreciate somebody wrote it, but it doesn't do anything to that policy, you are performing due diligence anyway. It must be, it, it acts like ink was free that day.
Alright, so.
We're, we're not getting anywhere, but if you want to, I'll make a motion for now. Can we change this fif- fifth paragraph to say capital improvement of existing or acquired town assets will not be approved or funded without first identifying?
Recognizing.
Recognizing all environmental liabilities, period.
Second.
Okay, and, but your motion was for the entire policy with that change in the paragraph, right, Mark?
Correct.
Okay, and, and that was, and you would second that, Richard?
I, that's correct, I'll second that motion.
I mean, I thought so, I just want to be clear. Uh, any other further discussion on this? Our hearing none, Deb, we call for roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Alright, good, and then, uh, we have another. Is this capital sta- stabilization fund show up on the screen?
Yes, capital stabilization fund policy, again, it's mostly cleanup, it sets the three percent floor uh, regarding the capital planning, funding sources. Um, you know, it states, you know, transfers in or out of the destabilization fund require the two thirds vote. Uh, and it updates the uh, dollar value of the capital items to be twenty-five thousand dollars as opposed to the old ten thousand dollar um, amount. And like I said, it was, it was mostly cleanup, I don't think there's anything more in there than what I have expressed. Um, yeah, that's basically it, it's uh, and then finally criteria for approval of, it shouldn't be expenditures. Um, expenditures was taken out. Criteria for approval of appropriation or transfers from the capital stabilization fund must be, you know, one of the following. There, again, there can be no direct expenditures against the capital stabilization fund. So a lot of it was clean, cleanup and wordsmithing to get it um, more fundamentally correct.
Okay, great, uh, any other questions for Paul on the capital stabilization?
Tom, this is Mark, this, Mark Gold, this, uh, it's not necessarily for Paul. I think the biggest change of this is changing capital definition from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand dollars and I, you know, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware of that because we need to have a plan for the ten to those items that fall between that old capital level of ten thousand and the new capital level of twenty-five thousand dollars. And historically, we have not had that planned because that ends up going to departmental budgets and we're not increasing departmental budgets to cover that. And I look back and, you know, every year, there's a good number of items that are in that ten to twenty-five thousand dollar range, including things for the, for the DPW. Now, it doesn't include trucks, but it includes a lot of stuff. I'm just concerned, is that too much of a jump in one year? And do we want to sneak up on twenty-five thousand dollars over a couple of years?
Well, I, I would just like to add that if you're going to change it or, or, or keep it at ten thousand dollars, you need to go back to the prior policy you just discussed where the twenty-five thousand dollar value was approved back in August of two thousand and eighteen. It's the first paragraph of the prior.
Hey, Tom, can I, uh, speak?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I can't help but echo what Mark is saying too. There's an awful lot of purchases in the ten to twenty-five thousand dollar range that most of the time, a operational budget would not have funds set aside to do. I mean, you're literally telling somebody that they have to have discretionary in their budget of up to twenty-five thousand dollars to pick up some of these purchases. And it seems like that may be a little excessive, uh, I, Paul, I realize we may have to go back and redo a policy, but twenty-five is a pretty high level uh, for uh, capital to cut in, when, especially when you look at the size of our operational budgets on some of the departments that would need capital.
Okay, um, I don't know, Lynn, do you have any comments on this in terms of these numbers, is it?
Um, well, if you change it right now, uh, I am making final plans on this FY twenty-two capital plan, so that could have some impact there. Uh, I will tell you, most of the requests received were over twenty-five thousand. There was one request that was fifteen thousand that I um, didn't include. But I also don't think that fifteen thousand um, was fully sussed out, I think it was only a portion of the entire project. Uh, I understand what you're saying, you know, there certainly could be um, some, some items that have a ten, you know, twelve, fifteen thousand dollar price tag on it that we would have to figure out how else we would fund, but the reality is more, things are costing more and more money, so I'm comfortable twenty-five thousand dollars. At least for this year.
Tom, I didn't want to give the impression that I was opposed to twenty-five thousand dollars. I just wanted to give the impression that it is a change and it's going to impact things, but you know, if, if, we've got plenty of capital, this, of things to spend on more than twenty-five thousand dollars, I'm just concerned there's going to be things in the gap that aren't going to get done.
A- and my concern would be, like Mark just said, uh, from a, from a, somebody that runs a budget, if all of a sudden now I had ten and now it's a twenty-five for a capital project, I'm concerned about wh- what they're doing behind the scenes on replacing some of that infrastructure, Tom, that may need replacing. But you know, I'm going to counter back, if, if the town manager is, is content with this at twenty-five thousand, she certainly should have a better grasp on what's happening in apartments than we do. I, I'll support her in, in leaving the twenty-five intact.
And I guess a question, Lynn, would be that if they had something that was fifteen or something, is there a way they could combine? If they were somewhat parallel, no?
Uh, it would be a really hard stretch to do that, I think. Um, I mean, I'm not, I, like Mark was saying, I'm not a, I would agree with him, I'm not opposed to this conversation either, it's just, uh, I spent almost the entire day today preparing the FY twenty-two capital plan based on twenty-five thousand dollars, so I would welcome this conversation maybe in a few months if we were looking at this for the FY twenty-three plan, but um, it's hard for me to say I'm willing to change this right now based on that. It, it could be that we, that there is a, a line that maybe gets considered to be added that, you know, a hundred thousand dollars needs to be for small projects under twenty thousand. Um, so that we could, you know, chip off five projects like that or whatever the equation would be. Um, but unfortunately, things are just costing more and more. So I don't foresee us having a, a huge amount of ten to twenty-five thousand dollar projects.
Yeah, Lynn, was this, was this policy vetted by your division chiefs?
No, not that I'm aware of, it may, uh, maybe was in, in twenty eighteen when it sounds like the twenty-five thousand dollars was first put in, but I, I don't have the history on that from then.
Okay, I.
If, if I can add, I think one of three things are going to happen with these capital projects between ten and twenty-five thousand dollars. One, there's going to be a separate warrant article at the May annual town meeting. Um, two, they're usually from a larger department, either from the school department um, or from the DPW that many times, um, the potential exists for year-end funds to be avail- available that could handle these. Or three, um, it falls through the cracks, so one of those three things are going to happen. I would assume the first is more than likely, if it's anything that is planned, um, they would bring it forward as a separate warrant article uh, for the annual town meeting.
And, and what's the source of the funding that you think would be proposed, raise and appropriate?
If it's the annual town meeting, it would be out of free cash.
Okay.
So this sounds like something that we could, give it a, a year and see if there's a big problem. Uh, then we would respond to, uh, Lynn and Paul's requests to come up with a additional policy or maybe make changes to this one. Um, but in lieu of that, um, do we have a motion to accept this one?
I'm moving.
You got two, I'll second whoever was first.
Okay, so Mark can, uh, forward the motion, you can second it. Richard is, any other questions or comments? Hearing none, uh, Deb, we want to call for roll call vote.
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
I don't know what's going on here. It's kind of all to me. Uh, here we go, um, this is our agenda, and the next is the stabilization fund.
No, that's the one we just did.
We're doing OPEB, I think, should be on that one.
We're go- we're moving on faster than I thought, alright. And uh, so here we go. Um, other post-employment benefits, funding policy. And um, we can take a look at this, Paul, do you want to make comments on this?
Yeah, the biggest change here is last year during the, the budget crunch. Um, the amount that was going to OPEB, which historically had been calculated as a percentage of the uh, property taxes, uh, was modified. It would have been close to seven hundred fifty thousand dollars in FY twenty-one. It was modified down to five hundred thousand dollars with the other two hundred and fifty thousand dollars going towards the operational stabilization fund. The intent there was to um, address some of the concerns by the credit rating agencies that our normal op, our normal reserves, town reserves were still slightly short when compared to um, communities of like size and that we were not being recognized. When compared to um communities of like size and that we were not being recognized on the other end. By what we were doing into the OPEB trust fund. So this is actually taking what was done last year and memorializing it. To be the initial five hundred thousand dollars in FY twenty one with an annual increase. Of two and a half percent thereafter. Um, I know Mark has it um has a a uh potential change to this. Um, which I could let him address, but that is basically what's before you was it was never. Done as a po- it was never done as a uh approved policy. Um, so I'm just trying to bring it forward to see what practice. The select board would like to follow moving forward. Uh, within the FY twenty two budget, I am following the proposed. Draft policy that is before you. Um, but again, I can change those according to any policy that is approved tonight.
Okay, uh any questions or comments? Mark, Paul? You're muted, Mark. Yeah, I can't hear you. Mark.
I had proposed an alternative to this, only that that had did a couple of things. The first thing it did is that. At the beginning of it, it cleaned it up and made it the historical document it did. So. A lot of this is it mine is wordsmithing. If you look at my version of it, the biggest issue is is. I think Paul put it very clearly is last year, we made an exception to our policy. Our policy had been. Increase the amount that we contribute to OPEB by point two five percent of our. Your revenues, if you will, our our tax revenue every every year, okay? Last year, we didn't because we needed to balance the budget and a few things, so we settled on five hundred thousand dollars. So Paul's policy now says, you take that five hundred thousand dollars and make that the new base and increase that by two and a half percent annually. Or in the proposal I had, do you take that five hundred thousand dollars and go back to our original plan? Which is to increase it by point two five percent of tax revenue annually till we get up to two million dollars. There's a big difference. Paul's would take it from five hundred thousand dollars a year up to five hundred and twelve thousand. Dollars a year or something like that, right? Mine would get from five hundred thousand dollars a year up to six hundred and forty five thousand dollars a year based on. On on Paul's calculations. And I think we just have to decide, are we gonna go back to what we said, which was. Our OPEB contribution up point two five percent a year, or we just gonna roll back and say the heck with it. We're just gonna start with fi- five hundred thousand dollars and take it up, take that number up. By two and a half percent, which is far less than the point two five percent we had said. The rest of it, I'd still propose we do that cleans up all the stuff we did in the past, and I'd like to see that. But the issue for me is where are we going starting this year and in the future?
Okay, any other comments or questions by board members?
Mark, is that a motion?
Sure, I'll I'll I I'll make a motion if you want to to approve the version that I put forward, but then we have we ought to put that on the screen, Tom. So people can see it. If if we wanna just discuss something. Again, it the the issue is is what do we do as a policy? For OPEB funding, that's all.
Right. Um, Paul, I have a question for you. Um, so as we look at the amount of money, I know that you said it was up to seven hundred thousand. There were would have been seven hundred thousand last year and then it we reduced it to balance the budget. But what were the prior like three years? How much did we put in?
I believe in FY twenty, it was six hundred and forty one thousand dollars. Uh, in FY nineteen, the number of five hundred and eighty comes to my mind. I'm not, I'm not. I'm not as sure as that one, but I do believe in FY twenty, it was six hundred and forty one thousand.
Okay, all right. So that um, so five hundred is. And even if you added two point five percent, it's still um a lot lower than what we've generally been putting in is. A good picture, right?
I'm I'm sorry, Tom?
Well, I I'm saying that, you know, if you look at 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 uh, you know, five eighty and six forty. Then, you know, putting in five hundred plus a two point five percent is still, you know, we'd be reducing. Quite a bit how much we're putting away from OPEB with this policy, the way it's written now.
Y- yes, it 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 is reducing, but simultaneously, a part of this discussion. Was also trying to put money and it's not on this policy, was trying to put money out of operating revenues into the operating stabilization fund. Um, that was the the other half of this, but again, like I said, it's not. Not part of this particular funding or not part of this particular draft. Policy, but I do have that also in my FY twenty two budget assumptions. That two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of operating revenues will be going into the operational stabilization fund.
Okay. Um, so this is uh, Mark, this is your uh, your contribution or the, you know, you've made some adjustments. Do you wanna talk at all about, you said there were some changes in the first part of this?
Yeah, I mean, it's instead of Paul's have had the select board recommended that beginning and mine says, you know. Or excuse me, the Paul had uh different wording than than from mine up there. It just as. The select boards in Ju- July twenty first, July first, two thousand thirteen recommends, and I just turned it to the past tense. Things like that. So the the big change is down in about two thirds of the way through that first sentence. Where it says, as of July first, twenty twenty, right there where you are. As of July first, twenty twenty, the town's contribution. The OPEB trust fund was scheduled to be five hundred thousand dollars. That's what it was this year. It represented point nine seven six percent. Of the twenty twenty one fiscal year tax levy, okay? And and is scheduled, and and here's where I changed it. And is scheduled to continue to increase by point two five percent of the tax levy. Paul had it will increase that five hundred thousand dollars by twelve by by twelve and a half percent of the. Or two and a half percent of five hundred thousand dollars. I'm going back to the original point two five percent of the tax levy. So, or Paul's would go from five hundred to five twenty five, mine would go to from five hundred to six forty five. As it says down at the bottom.
And and just by way of information, I pulled up the history. FY eighteen, we put in three hundred and eighty thousand. FY nineteen, the four hundred and eighty one. FY twenty was six hundred and twenty two thousand. And then five hundred thousand dollars last year.
Thanks, Paul. Um, so. And so, you know, with this proposal, um, you know, we would. It's it's interesting. I don't know if anyone has any other questions. And it says, um, again. Does not preclude any additional funding from the trust or free cash. So that. So that this also opens a door that if we could contribute more in a year. Um, you know, up to a million, a million dollars, we could do that also.
Right, and Paul's Paul's also allowed that. I mean, the issue for me was, do we really wanna fund OPEB and make the statement we're funding OPEB? And, you know, everybody believe, you know, I I'm the I'm the leader for saying OPEB funding is nuts, but. You know, I I bought, I drunk the Kool-Aid, I bought the fact that, you know, funding agencies, you know, and and. Rating agencies all want us to be funding OPEB. So, you know, all of our finance committee and our audit committee all say we should be funding OPEB. If we're gonna fund it, we need to fund it as opposed to to putting in, you know, twelve thousand dollars more. I mean, that that's never gonna fund OPEB. I'm looking to get to a point where we'll get to this five million dollars and can stop funding OPEB a lot more quickly, that's all.
Mark Gold, welcome to the club, and I'm glad you finally enjoyed the Kool-Aid.
Well, cuz you know, I've said we're one of the six smartest or six dumbest communities ten years ago to funding OPEB. But I I drunk Kool-Aid, let's fund it.
I I agree with you one hundred percent. Uh, you, Mark, you had a mo- mo- Tom, didn't Mark have a motion on?
Uh, he was holding holding on for it till we looked at it. Um, but he could, you know, someone could.
I'll ma- I'll make a motion to accept this version of the OPEB funding policy.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, uh, any further discussion?
I've I have a question. Um, in terms of uh where we're at, uh, this is for Paul. In terms of where we're at with the rating agencies, in terms of what you propose for this funding of OPEB. Uh, versus uh Mark Gold's uh different uh uh proposal. Is Mark Gold's, is I I mean, is that gonna increase our our uh our bond rating or is our bond rating gonna spend, you know? Is your proposal not gonna affect our bond rating one way or another? If we're gonna fund this thing, we're gonna fund it and it's gonna happen. But I don't see any reason why I have to rush to do it if our bond rating is not gonna be affected by this, which is. Which is extremely important. I I get that, but if it's not gonna be affected, I don't see why we have to rush to fund it.
I do not believe it's going to affect our bond rating for two reasons. One, um, as we alluded to in the past. Uh, they kind of ignored the OPEB funding in our trust fund balance and concentrated more on our. On on our, basically our general reserves. And two, it's going to take more. Than even if we did fund the OPEB at a higher amount, we were at the second highest level with standard and pores. Where we're at a double A plus. We have one more notch to go to the top, and I think it's going to take more. And just funding the OPEB to get to that top level.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, I just wanna point out to Paul that I I agree entirely with what you just said, but you have to remember that. Four, five, six years ago, we were being told exactly the opposite by everybody in the world that if we didn't fund OPEB, our ratings were gonna plummet. And so. The, you know, if you believe that, I'm not sure anybody does, but if you believed it, one could argue that if we stopped funding OPEB. At this level, our ratings could drop. Because I do agree, Steve, with what Paul said. Funding it at one level or another may or may not impact our bond ratings, but what we're told by everybody out there is that if we didn't fund it. Our bond ratings would go down, and that was at a point where we were gonna be borrowing for high school, we were gonna be borrowing for DPW. Borrowing for an adult center, and we needed the highest bond rating possible.
I I I I got that, but A, Paul's, you know, Paul isn't saying we're not gonna fund it. I mean, we're still funding this thing. That that's that's still going on. The funding's still happening. Plus, we have the flexibility to add money anytime we want to this thing. If we if we if need be, we're not prohibited from doing that.
Okay. Now, Paul, what's our backlog?
Uh, we we have an OPEB study in draft that has us at thirty million dollars in all in all. Uh, we have, yeah, it's still thirty million dollars.
And it's escalating at what rate?
Um, we had a little reprieve because we went to a professional investment over the last couple of years. Uh, so it's hard to say. Um, cuz it at the last report, it was maybe thirty. Might have been a little bit higher than thirty million or around thirty million. So it's hard to say what it's gonna escalate at, but I'm sure it's gonna. I I would assume going off into the future with status quo, um, no matter which way we fund. Um, it's gonna probably grow by half a million to a million dollars per year. Because the so-called ARC, the annual contribute contribution requirement. Is probably in the vicinity of like one point three or one point four million dollars.
Right, and at one time, we had talked about separating off new hires and setting up separate funding. We've not done any of that. So all of our new hires are still going into the same fund, correct?
All the new hires are in the same pool, yes.
Okay, and it's sa- it's safe to assume that our population's aging.
Every day.
Okay, uh, yeah, I I agree. Uh, Mark, I I'm glad you drank the Kool-Aid. I think. We've realized for many, many years that this was a a massive liability that lays out in front of us. Uh, this is only one of the liabilities. We also have a tremendous liability for our own pension system, which is above and beyond this. I forget how many million there is on that. Uh, and we had, we had turd and I and I and I. I sat in on the Moody's meeting also to where they talked about this in the future is possibly reflecting on our credit rating. It may not be doing it right now, but I I still think it's a safe bet on the future. We're being programmatic. We understand. This massive liability, and and I think it's beneficial for us to continue to proceed. We we've got this thing capped out. We've got balance points in there. This is not a, this is not a rush to judgment. We're not dumping money in something that's not needed. We are trying to play catch up on a monstrous, for sure expenditure that is in our future of our community. We're trying to be proactive. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, you know, it does look like we. You know, like last year when we needed to reduce the payment, you know, the select board had that flexibility. And Paul, we would s- we still have that flexibility in the future.
Your policy.
Yeah.
You, you know, you've you've, as as you did last year, you you amended it midstream. You have that ability to amend it midstream. Anytime in the future. It's only a policy and not a law.
Which I think is, it gives us a big advantage here cuz I I feel we're moving in the right direction, but yet we still have some. Uh, some flexibility to make some adjustments from year to year depending on what goes on. Um, so, any other comments before I call for a vote? Okay, so we'll do a vote. Deb, will you do a vote, call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right, so we've covered all of that. Um, thank you, good work. Uh, Paul, thank you for um helping us through this part of it. Catching up on all this stuff we need to get in order. Uh, with new business, we have a memo to the select board. Regarding uh trash amnesty. Um, and this is a standard thing we do. And the dates on this would be December twenty sixth through January ninth. People do allow one extra bag per household. Um, with COVID, they may not need it, but um. I don't know if folks had any comments on doing the holiday ha- uh trash amnesty.
I like.
Yes. Richard.
Yeah, go ahead, Mark. You you got the words rolling. I was just gonna roll the sign.
I just can say I'll move that we approve this trash amnesty for December twenty sixth through January ninth, uh one extra bag per household per week.
Sa- second to motion.
A second, okay. Uh, any further discussion on that? Okay, hearing none. Uh, Deb, we do a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Um, now.
Can I can I raise a question on this? Might be, well, when I read this, I have my trash picked up on Friday.
Yeah.
Which would be, which would be Christmas. So I'm allowed to put out an extra bag on December twenty sixth. I guess I would be allowed to put out a bag on January second. And am I allowed to put out another bag on January ninth? So it's it's three weeks for for this bit, for my particular pickup.
You may be on the luckiest street in town, Paul.
Well, I am, I am on the luckiest street in town already. I know that.
Uh, yeah, I guess that might do that for January ninth. Um.
Yeah, I guess so.
We'll just take our trash over to your house, Paul.
Yeah.
Hey, only one bag.
There's only so much trash you can, hopefully you have, you know, a family that uh makes a lot of trash during the holidays, so.
Just makes it easier for the whole week to for that second week to be a full week rather than drop it off on the eighth.
You know what I'll do? I'll I'll clean up my desk and I'll bring it there.
Okay, so uh, if there's no further uh questions or comments, we do a roll call vote on this?
Did we just do it?
We already did it?
Yeah.
Not right away. It's okay. Uh, I went backwards, that's why. Uh, I was about to go into the liquor licensing discussion. Um, we have uh this document that we sent here. Uh, I'm just popping this up that basically the current fee is uh twenty two hundred dollars for the year. Um, for liquor licenses for uh restaurants, clubs, package stores and so forth. And the uh, you know, I mentioned this last week during the select board comments that, um, you know, we look at. Establishments that serve uh that have basically premise consumption. Um, they have taken the. They have taken a hit because people haven't been able to use those establishments. These are, you know, the restaurants in town are really kind of key. I mean, we have a, a community that goes to the restaurant quite a bit. And if we lose those restaurants, it would change the character of our town. So, so I put this forward, hoping that we could entertain a motion to reduce the, um, these licensing fees about one-third, which would make it $1,500 instead of $2,200 for establishments that have premise consumption of alcohol. So that would be my motion. I don't know if anyone would want to second that.
Tom, question, so that, that, that applies to restaurants and clubs, but not package stores?
Correct. Not, yeah, not package stores, not a place that sells food and liquor, but leaves on premises, like the Delaney establishment?
Yeah, I'll second.
Okay. Discussion, Mark Gold?
Yeah, Tom, you know, I, I understand the, the theory here. It's, it's, but the licenses for 2022, I'd much prefer if what we said was based on the COVID virus and what we saw in 2021, we charged the full amount for 2022 and then offer them a rebate of $700 for 2020. Or, excuse me, for calendar year 2021, we offer the full amount, but offer them a rebate for calendar year 2020. The impact is the same, but I think what it says is their business was affected in calendar year 2020. That's when they're getting the rebate for.
Okay. Any further comments on that? Paul, does that make sense to you in terms of, or I don't know, I guess we should check our tax collector, but we look at reading tax.
Could you actually state it one more time?
I mean, oh, yes, Mark.
Well, in, in, instead of reducing our license fee for the calendar year 2021.
Right.
What we do instead is say anybody who had on-premises, you know, consumption of alcohol in 2020 because of COVID-19, we're gonna offer them a $700 rebate for 2020.
Okay, yeah. So you want to give them a credit or a refund? Let me get that straight.
A credit.
Sure.
Okay. Because I, because this, this is a fee, not a tax, right? So.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Because you can't do that with taxes, but you can do it with fees.
Right.
Okay. Uh, any other comments from people on the board? Okay, so.
The only thing I have a comment, Mark, was that a, was that an amendment to the motion?
I didn't even know there was a motion, but.
Yeah. We have a motion to, to reduce it by one-third. So amendment, if you wanted to make an amendment, that that reduction would be processed in a way that would be a, a deduction from their 2021 fee? Or a re, a rebate or something?
Yeah, I'll, I'll move that, that, well, actually, Tom, what I'd like to do is not change the license fee, but rather make a motion that on-premise alcohol consumption licenses be given a rebate toward their, a rebate on their 2020 license that's applicable to their 2021 license fee. That would be my motion.
Okay. And the rebate you're saying would be about 700?
The amount of $700.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, second that. And then I can withdraw my original motion, right? If I get a second, I don't withdraw. How do I, I don't know. We don't do too many withdrawals, but.
Just withdraw it, Tom.
Just, okay, so I withdraw my original motion. We'll entertain Mark's motion. Any comments on the motion on the floor this moment?
Um, the mechanics of this is they paid their 2020 bill. When they get their 2021 bill, they have to pay this already, right?
They've already paid their 2020 bill, Tom.
Right, so their 2021 bill is gonna be, uh, the 2,200 minus 700 bucks. That's what it's actually gonna be, right?
Right.
Yep. All right. And again, this is a, you know, was a state mandate to predict, reduce how many people could be in places. There were long periods of time where the state said, we don't want anyone inside. And so this is our way of making up what the state in Massachusetts has really created this burden for local owners. So.
No, I thi, I think your, I think your proposal was good, Tom.
Yeah, great. If there's no other comments, we can call it to a, a vote. And Deb, will you do a roll call?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
All right. Well, great. This was a, a good meeting. We covered a lot of ground. I believe we're in the, I did, ready for, looking for a motion to adjourn. Unless, Lynn, is there anything I forgot that you?
I just had some announcements. I, I just wanted to get.
All the announcements, yes.
Just quick, because a couple of them really need to be out there. The Long Meadow Historical Commission has two vacancies, so they're seeking new members. Same with the Board of Health. There's new members needed for the Board of Health positions. The Cultural Council has extended their grant application. Grants are now due on December 14th. And all of this information is available online on longmeadow.org. And the Recycling Yard Waste Center has fall hours now. They started on November 7th. And they're Saturdays, 8 to 3 through December. And you have to have a sticker to use the recycling center. And the Curbside Leaf Collection is going to take place on two more collection days, November 21st and December 5th. Leaves should be curbside in town-approved leaf bags by 7:00 AM on those days. The schedule is subject to change according to the weather. And again, it's all available on longmeadow.org if you need any of these updates or announcements again.
Okay. And, and, but the swap shop continues to be closed, right?
Correct.
Yeah, just so people don't get excited. Okay, great, thank you. Any questions on the announcements? Here are none. Uh, I'd look for a motion to adjourn the meeting. So I'm moved. All right. A second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, we got a second, we got, um, so, uh, all those in favor, Deb, will you take a roll call vote?
Tom?
Yes.
Mark Strange?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Mark Gold?
Yes.
Richard?
Yes.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, and we will see you. Our next meeting will be Monday, December 7th. Good night.
Thanks.